Just released in two thousand and twenty-three, a report which focused on radiation exposure for nuclear workers working in uranium and plutonium plants. And their statement from, uh, at that time said epidemiological studies of environmental exposure to plutonium and uranium did not indicate increased risk of cancer overall. Here the word environmental means to the public as opposed to nuclear workers, for whom there was unquestionably some effects. In other words, as of two thousand and twenty-three, according to the ICRP, there is no evidence of any increased risk of cancer to the public from plutonium or uranium in the environment anywhere in the world. That's what I wanted to say, the story of epidemiology downwind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, this question I think is for our staff. I'm not sure if you can answer this off the cuff, but um, there's the, uh, rep from Jefferson County mentioned the potential cost reimbursement of the purchase of the woman reservoir property. Can you tell me what our portion of that is?
It was a fifty-fifty split, so our portion was, I believe, I'll tell my eight hundred and sixteen thousand.
So that would be the portion that we would, that they spoke to would be their portion.
We both split it. I believe the exact number is in your packet.
Um, and while you're up here and you may or may not be able to answer this, um, as far as like air sampling, like I know that used to be a thing while the site at Rocky Flats was live. When did that actually cease? Because I remember even like a countryside rec that used to have a big weather station and I imagine that's what the weather station was for. So when, when did that air sampling for the community actually cease? Do we know that?
I don't know that, but I'm glad the researcher didn't find it.
It would be, I would be interested to, to know that information. One question I had, and we may not, again, we may not be able to answer this. I know, uh, early on in my time, for a short period, I was on the stewardship council and I've visited the core out there and saw, you know, how they've cleaned it up. And there's a lot of talk about the, you know, increase of wildlife. And so we're, you know, one of the big concerns here is, you know, kicking up dust or whatever. Like how much more increase do we think the disturbance is from human versus the increase of the animals? I mean, I guess you can't control the animals, but it just comes to mind, you're talking about a lot of, you know, the concern being that. And I've heard a lot, um, I know former councillor Seymour, when he went out there, they saw like the herds of elk that are out there that, you know, for a long time weren't prevalent. So is there, you know, what, what's the increase of that and, and the animals from it just even being a wildlife refuge?
I'll, I'll speak a little bit because I, I can't give you an exact. Um, one, in terms of the recreation, the, the wildlife refuge has regulations in place that requires you to remain on trail. So all the travel through Rocky Mountain, Rocky Mountain, Rocky Flats Wildlife Refuge is required to be on trails. The trails that were constructed out there have a crusher fine surface that is material imported into site. So you're not actually treading on the original surface. So I can't tell you numbers, but I can tell that, that's the impact. Your recreational impact is on that crusher fine, not on the underlying.
That's useful. I guess the other thing I'd ask is like how, and this maybe is for wildlife folks as well. Um, as far as like, I know one of the things that was talked about for Westminster is having signage so that people realize what they're crossing into, realize, you know, what that land was used for for a long time. Um, so what is the signage once people are in? And how do you police making sure that people aren't going off of those paths?
I'll, I'll leave the second part of that question to Dave. The first part, if, if Westminster continues in the process here, there was this, uh, one of your first slides that you saw from Rachel showed the kiosk. That kiosk actually sits on Westminster property, so that would be beyond the bridge. The information present in that kiosk, there is some language that has been agreed to by numerous partners, but Westminster controls that sign. We can put whatever signage, whatever information that we want into that kiosk, that would reflect.
Great, great. And that, I re- I recall that being the case. I'm just curious if that continues on, I guess is my point. So I guess it'd probably be more for the wildlife folks. Thank, thank you.
Councillor, you ask great questions. Um, and my life now dealing with, uh, all these fun things. Uh, the elk herd is probably one of my newer challenges to deal with. Uh, there's four hundred and forty-eight elk, um, in February, plus all of their calves this year. Hundreds of elk, um, and those elk need to be managed, so that's the next project. Um, but, um, we're most concerned about an increasing elk herd population in case there was any sort of damage to what is occurring on the central operable unit, because we don't control whether they're on the refuge or whether they're on Westminster or whether they're in wherever, uh, or whether they're standing on DOE land. So part of that management of that elk herd will be to make sure that we have a nice carrying capacity that won't ne- necessarily impact the grasslands, right? Because the grasslands were planted there to make sure that that all stays stable and together. So we will be managing elk in the future. Your other question I think was just kind of about general enforcement. Um, you know, the best way to deal with enforcement is kind of by the means and the mechanisms that we keep people in those areas, right? If they're cutting a corner or making their own paths, we block those off. Obviously, the, the heaviest hand is when we actually write tickets for those items, um, which does happen. Um, one of our bigger issues is dogs. Um, we do not allow pets on national wildlife refuges. Um, so pets is one that we're kind of constantly enforcing. Um, but realm, um, we were just talking about this, the, our basic fines are now up to about three hundred dollars, um, plus thirty dollar servicing fee. So it's enough to pay attention. But is there somebody that's sitting there at all times making sure that somebody stays on the trail? No. If the trails are designed well, people generally stay on them, right? It takes you the best, that they're designed well to get them from point A to point B in the most logical and, you know, appropriate way. But if, you know, people are cutting new switchbacks and things like that, you put up fencing, you put up barriers. Signage, um, the signage that we use, um, presently at, at all the entrances to the national wildlife refuge is what was agreed upon with the Rocky Mount, uh, the Rocky Flats stewardship council. There was a whole process many years ago, um, developing those signages, um, that are at those current locations. As discussed, Boulder and Broomfield can, um, Boulder, Westminster can place whatever they want on their signs. But I'm assuming it would probably be relatively similarly agreed upon language with stewardship council.
Um, two more questions for you and then I have one, one more question, I'll be done. So, um, in terms of, and we, so we've seen this a lot in our own open space. So is there, have you had increase in like homelessness, trying to live on properties that you manage? And, you know, same thing, like obviously it's enforcement, but that's, you know, we have found more difficult to enforce over time. So is that, uh, a challenge that you've seen out in that property or that in general you have to deal with?
Yeah, the unhoused population is real. Um, probably our biggest issues are at two ponds over in Arbada, you know? Proximity to other locations. Um, we have what we call the compassionate homeless policy, which is probably changed to the compassionate unhoused policy now. Um, but we, we give seventy-two hour notice, um, we make notification unless somebody has warrants. If someone has warrants, they're immediately removed, obviously. I have found folks on Indiana Street in the culverts up by Great Western, um, with all the building, um, that's going on post-martial fire. There's a lot of folks that utilize the highway one twenty-eight corridor. Um, most of those folks are, they are residing as transients, not necessarily with the, uh, typical challenges that we're dealing with with some of the other unhoused. But yeah, to your question, yeah, it's, it exists, um, but we have a, a policy. And like I said, we, unless you have warrants, um, you get notified, you need to go find another place. Our notification includes list of resources of places that you could find additional help. As we all know in the room and you guys deal with this all the time, tough, tough issues, particularly for males. Um, there's lots of resources for families, um, that are in need, lots of resources for youth that are in need. But if single males, um, it's generally only one or two places, um, that may be less desirable for them to go.
Great, thank you. Last question for you, um, and you kind of alluded to it. So I remember before I was on council, there was talk about doing some controlled burning out there. And I, you know, I don't remember who I got in a conversation with about it, that we weren't real sure what happened with the management of that. Because we understood the, the idea was to not allow, you know, wildfire. And this was pre the Marshall Fire. So where are efforts in that in, in terms of that, that property? And I know that's outside of the, the trail, but it certainly impacts this whole conversation in our community. And I got you right here, so I figured I'd ask.
Well, the Marshall Fire obviously changed the whole paradigm, um, on the front range. Um, so the original intent of the two thousand, I want to say, it had to be around, well, it was pre Candellis. That was the purpose of that burn, was to burn that off and, and have that area managed prior to the development. Now I have eight hundred and thirty-four homes, well over a million dollars each aligning that boundary. It's a little trickier. I do think the temperaments and the questions have changed. Uh, there's a, there's a large push by a large constituency for us to probably do some burns in that southern area, um, to protect those houses. What we have done has been focusing mainly on, uh, increased fire breaks along that southern perimeter. Over the last year, we've added an eight-foot, um, crusher fines trail, which acts as a defensible space. We've added additional access points so that firefighters can enter and exit safely, um, in the event of a fire. But simple reality is that area along Candellis hasn't burned in over seven, well, in seventy years that we know of, maybe even longer. Will it burn? Yes.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Um, my last question I think is for Mr. Andrews with the, around sampling. So, you know, I, I understand the, the thought behind it coming from the ground that, for me, that makes sense. Um, but one of the questions I want to make sure that is answered, um, for everybody listening is, um, you've talked about that, that there will be air sampling if construction proceeds or when construction proceeds. So what, uh, logistically, what happens if something is found that shouldn't be there that's troublesome?
With regard to air sampling?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, logistically, um, when you air sample, um, the nature of radionuclides in the lab, the lab analysis, it's a, there's a a twenty-eight day engrow period, uh, from when you collect the samples from when you receive results back for the methodology, uh, that we're currently using, um, for those samples. So those would be in arrears after construction is completed. Um, and then the methodology at that time hasn't been real, well flushed out. My recommendation would be to be if we found something that, that caused, was, was cause for concern, that we'd go back and we'd look at potential exposure to those workers and what, what that may, may or may not have impacted those individuals.
Okay, that makes sense, uh, what you're saying.
We do that, sorry councillor.
Go ahead.
We, i- in our current proposal that we're working on, um, on the front end of that air sampling there, um, we're, we're looking at, um, stop work notices related, related to wind speed, um, associated with that. So regardless if we have particulates in the soil of concern, um, construction would, would stop, um, at a given wind speed, which has yet to be established. To say we don't, it doesn't matter if there's something in the soil or not, today's too windy to be kicking, to potentially kick up dirt and transport that or soils. So we're just going to stop in, in, uh, regards to abundance of safety and caution. Uh, the other thing that we're working on for air sampling too is, uh, looking at per- personal air monitors, uh, for individuals. Um, so what it would be is like a little panel monitor, you can, you can clip it to anywhere, um, it has an air pump on it that, that pulls in air, uh, to replicate human respiration. Uh, you can, you can run those samples and test those.
Okay, and then my last question, um, is, say, construction starts this day, at what point does the air monitoring? Are you like turning those monitors on just when construction starts or does it start a couple of weeks prior? Like how, logistically, just so I understand, how does that air monitoring actually kick off, start, stop?
Yeah, we're still working through the details of when that would start. Um, and that was a question I think that was posed earlier to Jefferson County Open Space. That, you know, when, when can we do that? And I think that there's some room for discussion on when that would start, um, monitoring for that and, and what that would look like potentially beforehand, right? So it's, we can start whenever, it's just a matter of time and, and budget when we started that. So if there was a request put forth, I guess what I'm saying is we, we're in discussions as far as, does that start day one? Or does it start a week ahead of time or a month ahead of time? That hasn't been established yet.
That makes sense. And you, in, in your, earlier in your comment, you said as far as like how long it takes to get those results? How long was that on air monitoring?
Twenty-eight days.
Twenty-eight days? So if you wanted to see something before construction actually started, to councillor Carmelia's point, you'd have to start the air monitoring about a month ahead in advance, probably a little bit more even if you wanted to get it ahead of construction. So, um, that's all my questions right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, before I answer or ask, I'm going to answer all my questions. Uh, before I ask my questions, I'll, I'll go around again. Uh, so I know councillor Ireland and then councillor Carmelia had some. I don't know if there's any more online to.
So it's Sasha Stiles' hand up. Did you have something to say?
Sitting back and listening as a clinician will do, you're getting two sides of the story.
Stiles, yes, thank you.
Sitting back and listening as a clinician would do, you're getting two sides of the story. One side is of how these people say they're going to make it safe and of studies that they say make it safe. And lots of questions from a lot of you about how they do air monitoring and, and monitor that stuff. The other side of the coin is, at least coming from me and hopefully from my colleagues, is the medical understanding of the epidemiology that is there and also the risk of plutonium. You know, it may not go to you, but what if that eight-point-eight micron or whatever liver was a huge piece disintegrated and went, flew to Westminster during one of these storms into one of you? Or where's your children, uh, as it probably has to other people in the area? What would you do? He said, well, it's just some stuff is out there. No, if the some stuff actually gets to you and to your family or to your neighbors and you voted for this, for this thing to continue, how, how, how is, how is that right? Can't, there's a refuge there, it may be beautiful. I expect it is because it hasn't been human trafficked yet. But that doesn't mean beautiful visually has anything to do with not being toxic. It is very toxic. Um, there was some, what I raised my hand for is that someone said, well, you don't have to worry because, uh, the refuge didn't, didn't need to be remediated. If I were the mayor of, of Broomfield right now, which I'm not, I live in Superior. But if I were, I would have brought a piece of corningware. Do you all remember what corningware is? That's kind of those old platters that they used to make. And she set it on the desk and she said, all the workers that lived in Broomfield at this time were given corningware as a gift every time they dumped waste on the refuge or the, the buffer zone. And everyone in, in, you know, everyone acknowledged that that was happening. What does that mean? That means there is a set of data out there, there's a set of experiences that we've, we know because we live there or we've talked to people that tell you that maybe what they're saying is really great and it would be nice for it to happen. But what, at what cost and what cost to you? And we can bicker all we want about different epidemiological studies. Um, I, I would, I, I could differ quite a bit, uh, and I would agree more with, with Mr. Stafford. But I would say what it really is is how much do you want to believe of what's going on? And where do you think the danger really is? Is it, is there no danger and you just want to go to that beautiful place that has been manicured on one level? Um, or do you want to make your community safe? Do you want to keep cancer out of your community as much as you can? Or do you want to have this, this refuge there become a, a place where people walk more and more? Um, and that, and that, and the pollution is much more virulent than you think? You know, um, whether it's in the first four inches of soil, we know that the more it is trampled on, the soil becomes looser and that soil will be propagated throughout wherever the wind blows. Wind does blow toward me in Superior, I can tell you, um, that, uh, we've been told, as you know, not to, not to, um, uh, dig in the soil, not to have gardens, that unless we put our own soil back in, that is different. Um, this was since the Marshall Fire, which is another terrible thing we went through. However, in order to prevent any disease, the more you can do to keep the refuge safe for the animals who happen to live there would be in the best interest of your communities, your children and your future generations. Um, the scientists can speak better to that than I can. But as a clinician, I need to tell you, that's what I think and that's what I believe and I hope you will understand and agree. Thanks.
Okay, follow up to the money. Tom Hobie. I want to know what's in it for Westminster for spending eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to go into an open space for this trail? What was in it for them? And what is in it for them to do this bridge? What is in it for the city? And why do some cities have paid more for this Greenway Trail than others?
I want to understand the question you're asking, what's in it for Westminster?
Yeah, what is it for Westminster? Why would we spend that much money to have gone into that open space to get this Greenway Trail? And why would we spend another two hundred and some thousand for the bridge? What's in it for us?
Well, I, I guess a, a previous council made that decision, maybe some of you were on that council. Um, I, I would guess that there's, um, uh, something in the recitals that, um, that reference the benefits that Westminster. Um, in, in my mind, uh, is, is that trail connectivity, that, um, that opportunity to, uh, safely get into the refuge. I, I've been at this for, uh, for more than four decades now. I've seen lots of surveys of, uh, of residents, uh, in various jurisdictions. And one of the top benefits of, of parks and open space that, um, almost all surveys that I've seen, uh, identifies is recreation close to home. Having that opportunity to get outdoors, um, uh, for as long or a shorter period of time, uh, as, as you'd like, um, is something that people always value. So, uh, to the question about, um, is Westminster, um, bearing a greater cost than other jurisdictions? Um, I don't know the answer to that specifically. Um, the trail travels through a number of Jefferson County jurisdictions, including Westminster and Arbada. The, um, I have to put a little more pencil to paper on that particular question.
Okay, I would like an answer to that.
I can, I can address part of that.
Okay.
In the numbers in my presentation, you might have noticed that the city of Westminster, city of Arbada and Jefferson County have a larger portion of the share for the project. And, um, that's because they're, you're helping pay for the bridge because it's more expensive. So the city of Boulder and Boulder County, um, opted out of contributing as much for the Indiana crossing and we're contributing primarily for the undercrossing at one twenty-eight. So that's why the shares are a little different.
So do you know why we, we paid eight hundred and fifteen thousand for some open space? Was it just for this? For this trail?
It was.
Joe would like to answer that one.
The, the Woman Creek Reservoir property that, that you're referring to, um, joint purchase, one point six million dollars and change for that purchase. Prior to the city acquiring it in fee, we had a memorandum of understanding with the Woman Creek Reservoir Authority. They owned that land. We had the right to allow public access on that through the MOU. The MOU expired and, expired or was expiring in twenty eighteen. Woman Creek Reservoir Authority did not want to continue under an MOU. So our option at that moment was there is no more public access for residents of the city of Westminster or the city of Westminster acquires the land. One of the large driving factors in acquiring that land, it's three hundred and thirty-ish acres of open space. We've been talking about the Westminster Hills area previously. This is that whole western half of the, of the Westminster Hills open space. So one of the primary, the primary driving factor in us being able to acquire it was to acquire it for the Greenway Trail. That's, that is the language. I believe the agenda item for that purchase is included in your packet. If it's not, I will get it to you.
All right, thank you.
I'll just add that, uh, we in Jefferson County, uh, agreed to participate at fifty percent, um, for the Greenway Trail. Um, that said, uh, I, I think some of your recent discussions have, have yielded, uh, the value of open space to folks in Westminster. Uh, and whether or not, um, uh, this, the Greenway proportion is, is important to you. The, the open space component is certainly important. And, uh, our, certainly our resident surveys bear that, uh, out. Ninety-three percent of folks that we surveyed countywide, um, in twenty nineteen indicated that they definitely supported, uh, the continued acquisition of open space and parkland.
I'm going to go to councillor Carmelia, then councillor Hott.
Thank you. Um, my next questions are for David Lucas. Before I ask anything, I'll give a big public thank you for the tour that you provided throughout that land. It was really informative and, uh, I hope more folks do it, so thank you. I feel through some of your comments, you've alluded to this. Will, if, if somehow we make a decision to withdraw Westminster City from this area, will you lose management funds for the space, for the management of the space? Will it affect US Fish and Wildlife? And I don't see that link myself.
Yeah, that's kind of a super, almost theoretical question. Uh, obviously, I mean, one of the big things, I think we discussed this when we were on our tour, that I've learned during my career. Um, I started my career, I've been doing this a long time, like Tom, unfortunately, we've been around too long. Um, but more people grew up in rural environments historically. When I started my job to conserve was to put fences around things, keep people out, and then it would be better. Well, now eighty percent of kids are growing up in cities. Those are our future constituents. Those are the future people that are going to care about our natural environment, whether it's climate change, whether it's wildlife, whether it's whatever, whatever you care about from our natural environment, those are the people that are going to care about that. They've lost access because they're growing up in urban communities. So these values of these urban locations has become extremely important. So as an agency, we're trying to tear down those fences, invite people, create those connections so that those future constituents and those future generations care. That's, and so to your question, if we don't provide access to, to locations, I think there is a downstream effect financially in our ability to take care of our public lands. Um, if people haven't made those connections at a young age, if people haven't had those opportunities close to home, um, I think there's a long-term cost that we don't necessarily know today. Does that answer the question? I mean, there's not a direct line item in our budget. There's no budget incentive for us. It's one piece of property we manage with all the other pieces of property. You know, we have a million visitors a year on the east side of town. We only have, you know, tens of thousands on the, at this point in time over here. We do balance our workload based on that. But, you know, the land base kind of dictates where we spend our money. Where we're chasing invasive weeds, where we're dealing with wildlife issues, where we're dealing with other things, so. You know, I, I, I don't see, I agree with you, I don't see a direct, um, correlation that we're going to get a budget cut if we don't create this connection.
Thank you, I just wanted to be sure. And then, uh, another train of thought, you did address it in the presentation slightly, but my question has been throughout this process, why Indiana? And as you stated, you did a very thorough analysis of all the various, um, trails. I'm going to pick on one anyway, just because it seems to be slightly more obvious than going in the area that is downwind of this, uh, site, which would be a little bit north. Um, I did see on the map, however, it, it did somewhat answer my question because over by Walnut Creek, it looks like it's a protected habitat. Could you speak to that?
Yeah, um, one of the original crayons on a map that I made was kind of through that corridor. Um, there's an old railroad, um, an old narrow gauge railroad trail that kind of goes up and around that corner. Um, actually, a city of, I'm sorry, county of Boulder, um, and Broomfield did not like that direction. Um, they wanted to conserve Walnut Creek. Um, we want to conserve Walnut Creek as well for the, the kind of, well, we wanted to conserve one large area for the elk and other large moving animals somewhere on that property. So as a part of that master planning, we created some sensitive wildlife areas and it, based on proximity to other things, that corner made. And then based on proximity to other things, that corner made the most sense. So it was determined to be kind of sensitive wildlife. So it would have been the shortest. It would have probably been a lot less. The Greenway goes about eight miles on the property right now to get around that corner, where if we just cut the corner, it would have been a lot shorter. But kind of a lot of those discussions. At that time, Broomfield was a partner. They were never actually a member of the Greenway Committee, but they were a partner. When we moved the trailhead a little bit north, as you saw, to get into Broomfield, so that Broomfield could tap into those funds and tap into some of those trail connections as well. Then they moved out at a later date. Is that answering your question? Why not further north?
Right.
I mean, the challenge is it's just it's a tricky spot. We had a, I mean, there still is a parkway proposed to come around that corner as well. There's definitely going to be Indiana Street improvements here regardless of a parkway. Trying to find that spot, it was kind of based on drainages, high points, so that current location is where the old train trestle was. So I said that the train came in and went to the north. We're now coming in where the train came in and to the south. So those abutments that are on both sides where this bridge is going was already there for an old train trestle back in the day. So I was trying to take advantage of that, I guess, to a degree as well.
Is and I'm presuming there's not because you had a lot of the work in creating this trail. But is there anywhere else that avoids this corridor that you see as a possible fit to make this trail happen?
So we, like I said, we walked a lot of those areas. Staying off highway, there's really not many options. We could go further south in Darvada and cut through Candellas through where the King Supers and all that is. I mean, part of this was kind of designing the aesthetic and maintaining the off-trail, taking advantage of city of Westminster, Westminster Hills open space, which is a great resource where we already have built the trail all the way around Stanley Lake, already underneath eighty eighth or whatever that is, the two canals. So taking advantage of all that pre-work kind of led you to this neck of the woods. Is that answering the question? I mean, obviously, there may be other opportunities. And that's why our environmental assessment says we will work with the local governments on other options as well as this. But we would like to proceed with this option as the primary for the the Greenway. If city of Westminster and Broomfield and everybody wants to create another bike path at some point, we would support that and work with that. It's just the terms of this funding, which a lot of it is where the money comes from, leads us to it must create the connection to the Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge. That's the federal lands access program criteria. It doesn't really necessarily, they're not going to fund us to go around federal lands. That would be contrary to the federal lands access, right? If that makes sense.
I think so. I had a good question and then you you kind of added that, so. Okay, thank you so much. Well.
Can I chime in one thing on the air quality and the soil sampling, too? I mean, I think it's important to recognize. I mean, there was never a regulatory requirement. I mean, one of our foundational, you know, core purposes is to be a good neighbor. So, I mean, we recognize strongly that there are some people that have concerns. That's why we did confirmatory soil sampling. This is a tremendous amount of confirmatory soil sampling that's been done all the way along the route of the trail. Oh, yeah, we did that on the preliminary design. Now we have final design that shifts at ten feet this direction and twenty feet this direction. We came back and sampled it again because we want to be good neighbors and we want to be very transparent. The air quality sampling is very similar to that. We recognize that individuals have concerns. So as a group and as a partner group, we all are investing in ensuring that we do that confirmatory air sampling while the construction's happening. The reason for why was that was, in our minds, when the most soil disturbance could could and will occur, which is why it was during, not necessarily before. You brought up a good point. We'll talk about, you know, maybe doing almost like a control before work actually starts, you know? But that's the reason. It's because we're good neighbors. We work together on a million things. If Westminster calls and needs something, we're going to be there and we're going to try to satisfy that. We recognize that there are individuals that have concerns. We recognize there are individuals that don't have concerns. We're doing this additional work to make sure that we're utterly transparent. We're sharing all those results. Back to your one thousand three hundred page packet, Jason's report is a lot of that. Sorry, Jason. It's an insane amount of information on everything that was sampled at every single location and how we got there. It's got a very detailed sample design with public input and was adapted to make sure that we're being good neighbors. That's the whole part of this.
Thank you. I, okay, and then I will have one more question. It seems to me that, to your point about being a good neighbor and a partner and whatnot, if this trail were to be completed and we agreed to, you know, allow that bridge to be built. I still see, from my personal opinion, I think we're going to have to agree to disagree about what the effects could be about around plutonium. I still see major risk when that is happening. But once it's built, I suppose there's nothing that stops us from putting big old gates around it and blocking folks off of our Westminster portion and then working with Arvada or our neighbors to create roundabout trails in the future.
I would say there is nothing that prevents that if you want to go down the east side of Indiana Street with your own trails. I mean, the only thing that I will mention is that at this moment, I see people frequently that are at the trailhead at open Westminster open space, Westminster Hills, that are crossing Indiana Street and going on the trails on the refuge. It's already happening. You know, this is already a frequent occurrence at both of these locations, in Boulder County and in Westminster. People are utilizing these trails on both sides. They're trying to figure out how to get across there. So it is already happening. So you'd have to build a wall from Broomfield all the way down to keep people off that road. You know what I mean? They're going to go around and climb up the other side, which I think is an unnecessarily risky thing to add to the equation.
Thank you. Sure.
I just wanted to add a little bit to the discussion about the location of the Greenway Trail, the location of these crossings. We are, Thorough Highways is under contract to build these these crossings. They are in the road right of way. They are pretty much entirely funded, notwithstanding some of the potential cost increases that Rachel mentioned earlier. The the discussion on the trail alignment through the refuge was discussed with all the partners, had a significant amount of betting. That that trail, that trail is approximately eight miles, approximately eight feet wide through the refuge, that disturbance area through the entire refuge. If you do your math, it's about eight acres. That trail is built. That it exists today. It's surfaced with crusher fine material. If you think about what's downwind, if you if if you believe in in some of the information that's been provided by the folks who are concerned about the trail and that material blowing down, blowing east, that the prevailing wind. That material could potentially be blowing onto the Westminster Hills open space area, of which you just designated four hundred and forty acres as a dog off leash area. Dogs are going to travel far and wide throughout that site. People are going to primarily, and the lion chair folks stay on trail. If you designate it as stay on trail, even more people will stay on it. So we're talking about eight acres that's already surfaced within the refuge versus four hundred and forty that's going to continue to kick up dust and 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 be a challenge with with plant material doing well in that particular location. So just wanted to add those couple perspectives.
Thank you. I would, I guess I'll just add is that thank you. And what I see is a series of poor decisions and I'll have to figure out how we can either add to them or rectify them. There was a doctor who spoke on our very first panel, I believe it was you yourself, and I don't remember your name, I'm so sorry. Yes. Deborah, thank you so much. Could I ask you some questions? Thank you, Deborah. Okay, around some of the presentations we heard tonight, we're discussing that, I think it's the levels of plutonium that were found are far below the fifty picograms per unit that we said was either allowed or recommended, even though, from what I understand, there's no safe level of plutonium. I guess that's my first question. I'd rather have you describe that. Is there any level of plutonium that is safe?
Not really, no. As Randy Stafford alluded to, which is correct, that fifty picograms, picocures per gram of soil. Quote permissible plutonium was essentially reverse engineered to fit the needs of the cleanup efforts, et cetera, that were going on in the refuge. And as was also alluded to by our panel, the RESRAD calculations that are used to assess relative safety have severe limitations. And I won't reiterate all those, but, you know, those were enumerated during a presentation. So taking those into account and given the biological dangers of plutonium, which I did describe, my own assessment of the situation would be no. That there really are no safe levels for plutonium. If I can give you a personal anecdote. So my husband, who is also a PhD researcher and was also a professor in the same school of medicine where I was, and also worked with radioisotopes for decades like I did. And I, when we retired, we moved to a home that was only one and a half miles from the refuge, ignorant of the situation there. And as we became better educated regarding the ongoing contamination of plutonium there, after a year, we sold our home at a loss to move out of the area. Okay? That's just my own personal story and I think that sums up pretty well what my assessment of the safety aspects of the refuge are.
Thank you. And I'm wondering if you can speak to this. We heard some numbers around, you know, if you inhaled some of this, your chances of cancer would go up by, I think it, I don't remember, it was like a thou, one one thousandth or something. Can you speak to that?
I can't because I have not seen those documents before today's testimony. So I would have to review them and review the initial sources to be able to make any kind of comment regarding them.
Do you have any information on the collective impact to or or a number, any type of information around what how much this might affect somebody's chances around cancer? I think we we did list some numbers around it affects women and girls more. What, if you inhaled it, do we have a number around that? It sounds like maybe not.
I don't think those kinds of data are readily available.
Okay.
To answer your question.
Understood, no worries. And then we also heard that folks could choose not to use the trail, right, if they are concerned? And I, do you believe that this impact only affects those who are on the trail?
Oh, by no means. It affects those using the trail and unfortunately, many of them may be unsuspecting of the health risks associated with being on the trail. But in addition, as we've noted, I mean, even with that additional soil on top, over time, there's still going, most likely going to be disturbance of the contaminated soil. And that would lead to more airborne contaminated dust leaving the refuge and going into the downwind areas. So it would not only be affecting those on the trail, but also off-site. As well as as they connect to other trails and go elsewhere, they could potentially be tracking plutonium and other carcinogens with them outside of the refuge.
Right. Do you have anything else to add?
Not at the moment, but I, from my own personal and professional experience, I, it, being on the refuge is not something I would recommend to anybody.
And I don't know if, since you're a doctor, this might be outside of your field, but how far, how close to that refuge would you say you would go?
It depends on like the, really the wind direction in large part. I mean, it's the wind that's carrying the contaminated airborne particles of plutonium off of the off of the Superfund site and off of the contaminated regions of the refuge, off of the land. So I would, I would be looking at those directions and quite frankly, being as far off-field as possible from the wind-blown area.
Right. Thank you.
Councilor Hott.
Um, yes, I think this question would be for Dave Lucas. Okay, so I was told something when I was talking to some folks prior to this meeting, and I want to find out if it's true. Is it true that there was, so I want to talk about the water? That there was water runoff from the refuge that was ending up in Stanley Lake? So it was mediated and rerouted so the water runoff would go to Woman Creek Reservoir? Is that true?
You're getting a little deep into the cleanup remedy that I, that's not my strong suit. But as this group that we've been talking about that you purchased the land from, the Woman Creek Reservoir Authority, directly across the street is this structure that was built on their land, designed to capture water runoff from that southern Woman Creek drainage and prevent that from going into Stanley Lake. But that might be a question that we put into the notes to get you more detail on exactly that pathway. I I like to always say that, you know, Superfund and cleanup are kind of like first aid. You know, the first step is to stop the bleeding. Second step is to come in and kind of figure out what's going on. And then the third step is to treat things, right? So during that initial stage of the cleanup was when they were kind of creating these barriers to prevent any further contamination downstream while they were working to create and analyze the the larger scale remedy. But I think your question is, is there, where does water runoff go? Is that basically the question is, and we can get back to you with that answer?
I would be very curious to find out where it goes and what, where the groundwater from those reservoirs go. But I guess my whole point is if there's no risk to Stanley Lake, then why are we mitigating the runoff?
Joe seems sad.
So I, our Public Works and Utilities is very personless and I can get them to answer some of that. There is actually a complete study session that was done with Public Works and Utilities that's in your packet now that goes through a lot of this information. But I'd be glad to have our Public Works and Utilities folks come back and give you more of that information.
Yes, because I believe it's not only the refuge runoff, but also the airport runoff that goes to Woman Creek Reservoir. So I'm very curious what happens to that water. And I guess the whole point is clearly there's a risk or else we wouldn't be mitigating that risk. And that that that's it. I just wanted to know about the water. Thank you.
Any questions online before I ask mine?
This is the mayor. Can you hear me?
Yep.
I sit on the stewardship council for council with Rocky Flats and, you know, we. I sit on the stewardship council for council with Rocky Flats, and you know, we go over all of, everything that's been discussed tonight. The air pollution, the water, one of the things that Northland Thornton and Westminster are key on is that water testing and at all points and sites, and we are doing that. And so we're in the midst of, does the stewardship council still exist? How will it look? And tonight's pros and cons that I've heard, for the forty-seven years that we have lived here, they haven't changed. And the one thing, no matter how many meetings I go to, you have new people that are residents in, in all of our cities that are close to us, including our own, that the bigger question is, how do we educate? And how do we let them know what that land was so they can make good choices? Instead of just making choices for people that say, you can't do this, or you can't do that, or, and close things down. People need to know their choices. They need to have good signage, but more importantly, we need to have good education because we have a lot of people that do not know what that land was used for, have no idea. And I know we've had things put in contracts before. People don't read those. So we all just need to find ways to not scare people, give them the facts, let them make their choices. And because I'm telling you, we don't have a choice when that wind blows. The quote cleanup, and I, I hate that word because I don't think clean is a good word for what they did. With our Chinook winds going a hundred miles an hour and going any and all directions, you better stay in that day and not breathe the air. Because it's, it's coming off of there, and it is what it is, and we can't control that piece. And so anyway, education is the key for me, is just helping people understand so they can make their own decision. And this is going to be on the, I know it's the outskirts of everything. It's not in, into it, into the site. But I too have, I, I know of people that worked at nights, and I know that there was another dumping site that DOE and the feds would never look at. Once in DC, our whole group went to the environmental group and said, we'd really like to see these maps, and we have yet to see them. They told, said they had them, but we never saw them. So we have to make the decisions based on what we have. Like I said, for forty-seven years, I've been here for the fire. I've been with people that work, have worked at Rocky Flats. What we, what we are doing now with the testing, and when we pushed back when DOE did not want to do that anymore. And I think we have good reason that we always want to be able to test the runoff and anything that goes towards Stanley Lake. And we have fought for that, and I know we need to keep fighting for that. But we also need to educate our people so that they know what decisions that they choose to make for their families.
And I just want to add real quick. I agree with everything the mayor said and everything that everyone else has asked, every question, every answer. Thank you, everyone, for coming. My personal opinion is I just don't want to even partially risk the exposure of our residents to plutonium-contaminated air, right? And I think that's what this is all about. It's really about risk thresholds. How much risk are we willing to, to accept? And I think if the bridge is going to happen anyway, regardless of our decision, let it happen, and we can use, but we can use that money that we would have put into this for the education piece, because I agree that the education is the key here. We need to educate new generations who don't know anything about Rocky Flats. And we can use that two-hundred K to do a really, really good program on education or something related to that. But thank you for everyone who came up.
Okay, so I do have questions, but I feel like maybe we can. I, I don't feel like my, from the different presentations that we had, that I actually understand whether plutonium is impactful or not, based on one side saying it's not, and the other side saying it is. Sorry, hold on. And so that's, it, it's hard for me to reconcile this information. Mr. Andrews, you talked about, you know, maybe doing, having a stop-work order for a certain wind speed, which indicates to me that there is caution to be had, despite the fact that plutonium is theoretically not harmful. So I'm not understanding, one, I mean, this was a superfund site, so clearly something's there that's not good. And we have isolated a certain area around that superfund site because it has had high readings, the highest being forty-nine, peak of whatever the unit is. And so I'm, I, I'm trying to understand if it's not bad, why is it not allowed to be developed on? And why are we concerned that high wind speed should be something that we would stop work on? And that we are doing these measurements and putting, measuring elements onto folks' collars for air quality? Can you help me understand that?
Yeah. Those are, those elements are put in with what we feel are an abundance of caution, right? To come forward and to, to put some engineered controls in place to help, I can't think of the right words right now, but to, to help allay public fears related to construction, right? Based upon the data that we currently have collected, we don't have concerns related to construction. But in order to help the public feel comfortable with where we're going with construction, we've put these, or we're proposing to put these in place to help the public feel, feel, feel better about what we're doing. And then also to give those people who are working in the construction site data as well, right? We, I, I believe that data is power, right? And, and my goal here tonight is just to provide data to those individuals. And I'm one of those individuals that believes that if, if I have nothing to fear, let's go ahead and measure it then. Why not? Right? If somebody asks me to measure it, I'll go ahead and measure it. So I, I don't have concerns associated with that. And to that effect, we're going to go ahead and measure it and see what the data tells us, right? I, I believe, I believe firmly in data and the scientific process, and let's collect the data. And see what's there, if we're going to go ahead and go that direction. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Kind of, but you know, everybody has data tonight, so.
Well, yeah, and we talk in data in big, in big terms, and that's why you have, our report is alluded to, it's five hundred and thirty-seven pages, plus another, the Jefferson Parkley report we can get, it's probably another five hundred pages. So in a se- in a session like this, it's very difficult for us to get into, to technical data. It behooves each of us to go home and to read that, those individual reports and interpret the data for ourselves and understand where we fall.
Okay. One thing that might be helpful for me to understand, and I don't remember who would be the best person to answer this, but maybe Mr. Lucas. You had mentioned that there are, I don't know, approximately five hundred elk hanging out. They're probably heavier than a human in general. And walking around disturbing the soil and not walking on our trails, like we would tell other people to do. So how does that, how does controlling that population and where they're going, I mean, really compare to just, you said tens of thousands of people, which is, you know, I don't know, thirty, forty, fifty people a day versus five hundred elk walking around?
Out of all this come together?
Yeah.
The hard part about all this is, I mean, we've talked about it, there's upstream, I mean, contaminants move based on, it's not a logical process. Everybody here said, what happens? The wind blows, it moves it, water flows, it moves it. Contamination exists at different levels, at different locations, based on where you sit in that plane, right? If you're downwind, downstream, contamination loads are higher than upstream, upwind, right? So I mean, the, the average concentration of contaminants on that property is low. It is isolated to certain areas. It's well-understood. All right. So then what does that mean in terms of how you manage all the different resources and all the different things that are going on there? I mean, what's been proven through all the sampling is the lands that are released, delisted, no longer superfund, that are refuge, that are Westminster, that are Arbada, are at levels where those, that's not as germane. So as mentioned, we are concerned about the number of elk on the central operable unit, which is still managed by the Department of Energy. Part of their remedy is restoration of grasslands and wetlands and all the stuff that's in there, right? So too many animals there, we believe, is an issue. Too many animals walking around on the areas that have been released is not an issue, if that makes sense, because of the difference in the studying and the fact that the land was released unlimited, unrestricted. It's, but from a wildlife perspective and a refuge perspective, too many animals on a refuge also bothers me because that affects the habitat quality for other species, grassland, birds, et cetera, et cetera. So how do you square the difference as a counselor between an elk walking around and a person walking on a trail? I can't answer that for you. That's just, you know, that's the difference in the different uses that are going on there. We have humans that are walking on trails, that are covered in crusher pines from another location, that are packed in with rollers. And yeah, then you have animals that wander around. And if the concern is kicking up dust, I'm confident that five hundred elk kick up dust a lot more than a handful of people on trails. Does that answer the question?
Yeah. And then one additional,
Sorry.
Please stop asking question. I know, I know the feeling. So one question I have, if the bridge goes under construction and that we're digging six feet below, et cetera, to get the foundation, can we add some additional mitigation, dust mitigation, to this construction process so that we're adding like more water into the soil during the, during that timeframe? Are there things that we could request as a city of the construction process?
I mean, there are all these normal, typical construction processes that will occur. You know, stormwater planning, the, the steel fences, all the stuff that you put up that you see everywhere. There is dust abatement requirements based on what you're doing from a project standpoint. While there's nothing specifically required for this type of work, I mean, I think folks are aware of those, and I think that's something that Westminster needs. We could likely include that in a partnership agreement, that there'll be some additional dust abatement. I mean, the bridge construction, I feel like, is of pretty small impact. It's, we've talked about it going down. But the footprint is, you know, four pieces of concrete poured, three foot probably this wide, and as wide as a bridge is, twelve feet wide. That's your disturbance area. I mean, but the real world we all operate in, as we know, it's a construction site. There'll be cars driving around on the shoulder of Indiana. That kind of stuff will be going on. So it, dust abatement is something that the partner organizations desire. I think that's probably a relatively easy thing to do, to spray some water on the soil.
Okay. And I think I'll stop there. I, we've had a lot of great questions, so I appreciate everybody answering these. Did you have a response for that?
I wanted to say something about something earlier that's waiting for me to be done.
Oh, okay.
Diane Durigo with Nuclear Information and Resource Service. I wanted to respond to the comments about the ICRP, the International Commission on Radiological Protection. That is an international, well, actually, what I'm hearing is that there's a, who do we trust? There's a credibility issue. Who do we trust? I mean, really, the Environmental Protection Agency, the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, they're supposed to protect us. I pointed out that the standards that the Nuclear Regulatory Commission changed to make it cheaper to decommission facilities, they did that even though they knew that radiation dangers were higher. So I don't have a lot of faith in the Nuclear Regulatory Commission and what it does. The change that they made was recommended by the International Commission on Radiological Protection. So what I'm saying is that even though that's an international agency, it's also an agency that is a promoter. So we have to really look at who is credible in these cases. And then the scientific facts about plutonium, there is no way that plutonium can be considered safe. It's one of the most toxic substances. It's basic common knowledge. But it's so common knowledge that I can't cite the, you know, which, which documents say the best about it. Something will, our team will certainly be providing to you. There's a book about people and plutonium that Dr. Leroy Moore put out, and he's got references about plutonium dangers. If, I'm, I'm sorry to, to see that after what we've been doing here, that you think that plutonium might be considered safe. It's not. I mean, there, people want to say that there are different risks to compare. So the, the credibility of expert agencies and expert sources of information, that, that's important. And then, so that was one point. And then providing enough information for people to make their own decisions for them and their families, well, that, that's fine, except that when they go trek on that land, they are going to get contaminated to some extent, and they are going to spread it. There's no way that somebody's going to walk onto a Department of Energy site and not get some amount of contamination. A Department of Energy nuclear weapons facility-type site. And I mean, th- this is something that regulators and, and, and Department of Energy people have, have said to me that, that you can't assume that those sites are ever going to be clean. And, and you said yourself. So I don't want to take a lot of, of time. I just want to point out that there should not be a really big pause about how dangerous this material is. If it, we need to do our work and provide more to you, but you also need to, to look at what the real dangers are of, of this element. It's one of the most toxic, it's one of the most dangerous elements on Earth. And there's not a safe level. And I guess I'll stop there. There was one other point that was raised about how clean is clean. And I think that it's impossible to clean up a, a site back to its original level. You know, it's not possible. Every site that takes on a nuclear action is a sacrifice area. It's going to be more risky and more contaminated. And the question really is, how dirty can they get away with leaving it and having the people who are responsible for it be relieved of liability for it? And I thank you so much for taking all this time. I'm very, very impressed with the level of attention and, and that your, your counsel is providing. I think it's a really important question, and thank you for all of your. um, that your, your counsel is providing it. I think it's a really important question, and thank you for all of your, um, energy to, to look at it.
Thank you. So with that, I would ask the rest of council, um, where? Oh. One more hand, um, did you have an additional?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. If, if people are able to raise their hands and make remarks, may I be afforded that opportunity as well?
If we can make them short, yes.
One thing that has changed in forty seven years.
One thing that has changed in forty seven years, and I, I very much appreciate Mayor McNally's comments about signage and education, is that Fish and Wildlife has begun managing the refuge and opened it to the public. And I'd like, the, the comment that I want to make is, is about, just about logic in addition to data. Mr. Lucas talked about relying on scientific agencies. One of those is the Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry, whose toxicological profile for plutonium document says uh, inhaling plutonium is the most dangerous way to be exposed. And if you know that you are in plutonium contaminated air, you should leave immediately. David Wood said that he would be stunned if there wasn't plutonium contamination in the air at Rocky Flats. So if we put these things together, um, we must conclude that it's not safe. We have the federal government saying it's the most dangerous way to be exposed and you should leave. We have plutonium in the air. So what's the point of ensuring that there are safe crossings to an unsafe area? And I know that, um, the point of choice has come up. Individual people can make their own decision about whether to go to the refuge or not. But as a municipal government, you and, and Jefferson County are making decisions and spending money to enable people to go to that unsafe place. And I didn't know until tonight when Tom Hobe said it, that Jefferson County had spent eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars buying a contaminated property. And I'm actually upset about that as a constituent and taxpayer in Jefferson County. So I just wanted to, um, point out these couple of illogic problems in, in the discussion tonight. And I, I also thank you all very much for your time and attention and great questions. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Protem. John Lipsky again, I'll make it short. When I was at Rocky Flats in June of nineteen eighty-nine, I was contaminated. And as it played out, with the latency period, I had renal cell carcinoma last year. And I had the surgery. And it did catch up to me thirty-four years later, as it can to anybody. Renal cell carcinoma is a recognized cancer for nuclear workers. If they've got it, they're covered under their unique Claim Compensation Act. As far as the signage goes, I get it in writing from Fish and Wildlife Service, because we've been active since twenty sixteen, attempting to somehow negotiate some of these issues that have been brought up tonight. Wes McKinley was the foreman of the Special Federal Grand Jury for Rocky Flats. He became a US, uh, or, I'm sorry, a Colorado legislator, District sixty-four. Three times he tried to pass a signage bill, and I'll be glad to email it to you. Oh, six, oh, eight, and twenty-ten. And David Abelson and DOE were there at, at the Capitol, fighting it, trying to get everybody to vote against it. You don't see any signage, I've been at the refuge lately, there's no signage about the history. And if you wanna go talk to, uh, Commissioner, um, Stolzmann and Commissioner Mart over at Boulder County, they would like to see some outreach, just like you're talking tonight. But it's gotta be in writing, because I, I, honestly, I just don't trust them, the Fish and Wildlife Service people. They've resisted us. As far as soil sampling goes, I disagree, and it's not respectful, uh, what David Lucas said. They did not, they were not transparent. They snuck around all of the staff members of the city of Boulder, Boulder County, Superior, Broomfield, Westminster, Arvada, and I've been to most of them back in twenty sixteen. And everything was consent agenda about the greenway. And when we went to the meetings, the council or commission meetings, that's what we saw on the agenda. The greenway was a consent agenda item. We asked for and received them to be unpeeled, they were. And the bottom line was Dan Rozier, who was then the chairman of the Jefferson County Commission. He stood up, it was May sixteenth, twenty sixteen, there's a video of it. And he agreed with like-minded people like me about soil sampling. So much so, that if you look at the application that Jefferson County submitted, there is a soil sampling requirement, as did Boulder County. And that really wasn't followed. Kind of a different story, but with the Jefferson Parkway, Dr. Ketter met with Bill Ray, JPPHA, asked him to do some soil sampling, and he said no. So Dr. Ketter went to Broomfield, where a bunch of us were, and he talked to one of the counselors there, I forget his name. He said, that's ridiculous, I'm gonna make it happen, so they did. So in July of twenty nineteen, EA, you have a representative here tonight, they found that two hundred and sixty-four picocuri per gram, eight point eight micron particle, which was, is, uh, DOE definition of a hotspot. It, it's been a fight, and I'm sorry that Mr. Lucas has spent ten years fighting this thing, but, um, you know, when FHWA doesn't even let us say anything about this process, you all have given us ample time, almost six hours. It's, you know, this has been a wonderful pro, uh, process, and I've, the bottom of my heart, I, I, I thank you very much, I really do. But this, this is the insidious part of the whole thing. We have something to say. I mean, I'm in awe of the people I was at the table with tonight. And it's just, um, it's just outlandish. But the soil sampling was a fight, and it still isn't being done correctly. And there's a lot of, um, musical shells going on, on the table and what have you. And, uh, Counselor Ireland, I think basically the Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge Act forecloses on any development. I mean, that's a s- really, if I was a fish person, I, I think I would know that. There can't be any development. But I'm wary of it because it's beautiful out there. I mean, I can go on and on about the Boulder Flatirons, but the core, the COU, uh, DOE operates right now has a seventy-five year congressional funding, uh, life to it. I don't know what's gonna happen in seventy-five years. They can't even get it together right now, it's the, uh, you can't even find any signage that the remedy at, at Rocky Flats is deferred. It's protectiveness, protectiveness deferred since July of twenty twenty-two. And it's because of PFAS. But there's no signage of out there. There's all kinds of problems out there. I've been, I've been monitoring it. They just revegetated the nine oh three Lip in Hillside, which I think is the culprit for what Dr. Ketter and I did on April sixth, twenty twenty-four. I mean, it's, um, it's just unbelievable, and the air monitoring gets worse, uh, Counselor Demott. I, I'm, I'm the custodian of worker records from as early as nineteen seventy all the way up through the cleanup of two thousand and five. And nineteen ninety-four, one of, and they're called the safety concerns, that the workers would write and then meet with the company, at the time in ninety-four was E G and G Rocky Flats. And they, the worker complained that the, all the air monitors were shut off. Done. This was during the deconnap- decontamination and decommissioning at Rocky Flats. There was fecial material storied, stored out there, before they did the demo out there. And these air monitors, on and off-site, were all shut down. And the excuse was, oh, they're transitioning to new equipment that hadn't even been built yet. I do have a document of air monitoring, uh, that I can, that I'll, I'll follow up with, and a three or four-page, uh, explanation of it. I'd be surprised if air monitoring occurred at all in two thousand, up to two thousand and seven. But I, I work with, um, with, um, Mickey Harlow, a colleague, you know, we're, uh, she's a retired Westminster employee.
Yes, we did.
Beverly on the, uh, Rocky Flats refuge issue. She told our group that she sent a letter to Mayor McNally.
We did see that, I was just hoping you could wrap up your comments.
Pardon me?
If you could wrap up your comments, so we could, I'd like to just get us to.
Well, anyway, um, um, Mickey talked about the air monitoring stations were, uh, weather stations, they weren't really monitoring the air. And just to finish it up, I'm concerned about the workers. I don't live in this area, I live in Longmont, Colorado, but the workers are important to me, that are gonna hopefully not build this bridge. And of course, the offsite people. But why are we talking about following up with workers? You know, the, the, the representation was that the construction workers, if there's a problem with air monitoring, we'll follow up with them. No, PPE, Personal Protection Equipment, while they're working out there. And, uh, I didn't see that on the, on the bulldozer operator on the refuge back in March, when they were scarring up those trails right near the southeast gate. There's video of it on nine news. So I, I, and I looked at him, and he's not wearing PPE, so that's where my heart is. People need to be protected at their job and be able to walk away and enjoy it. Thank you again.
Thank you. So, council, yeah, so go ahead and.
I just, couple of quick comments of listening to the, um, closing statements that I just wanna make sure correct on the record about Westminster's process, so. The original time this was in front of council was in twenty sixteen, so nobody up here was on council when that happened. Um, but it was, and I'm glad to hear this, because that is concerning that, um, cities made this kind of decision on a consent agenda, and Westminster was not on a consent agenda, it was a a normal business item that would have been discussed, it was item ten A, July eleventh, twenty sixteen, so. Um, that's unfortunate that other cities didn't do that. The only other thing that I wanted to mention, I, you know, and I do hope that from what I understand, no matter what our decision is, likely that bridge is probably gonna get built. Um, that trail is already there, so I would, uh, hope that there are some educational pieces, and I kind of alluded to that I feel that that's necessary in, um, Westminster, whether or not we, uh, because I, I think we've heard it, whether or not this group decides that we should continue down the path that we have. We've talked about that, uh, kiosk and some signage. I think that needs to happen no matter what, at the edge of our property, uh, whether it's open or not, because I do think our constituents need to know what's on the other side of Indiana, whether there's a bridge or not. Um, I, I grew up in this community, I've lived in the countryside neighborhood since my parents brought me home. Um, there were about four years where I was somewhere else, so out of my forty-five years, I've spent most of them over there. Most of the people who lived over there worked at Rocky Flats. My dad, a retired policeman, was one of the few people on my street who didn't work at Rocky Flats, so. Um, you know, I understand the concern and, uh, risk, um, it's been something around me my entire life, so. Um, I think the educational piece, for a lot of different reasons, is important. I think it's, uh, important to keep our, our governments honest and remind folks when, when they haven't done, done that, so. Um, I hope, no matter what, we, we do that, no matter what the decision is.
Thanks, Counselor Demott. Um, I personally would like to request, um, an additional exec session, um, and opportunity for us to discuss afterward, have a, um, a follow-up. I don't know if that's a smaller study session item, so that we could, one, um, tap into the, probably some additional legal questions that we may have. And then two, just to consolidate these, um, this information and provide some direction to staff. I don't know if anybody has any additional thoughts on that?
I'm, I would support that, we've heard a lot tonight, it's almost tomorrow. So, I, I think that, uh, you know, I'd like to think about a lot of what we've heard and also get some feedback. I mean, there's been some ideas put forward as far as like additional safety and stuff, so if it goes forward, um, some opportunity for the partners to be able to speak on some of those, I think makes sense to me, Mayor Protem.
I completely agree.
Agree. So, um, I leave it to Manager Freitag to develop some next steps on, on getting those agendized for an upcoming meeting.
Sure, uh, Mayor Protem, I'm, I'm tracking pause, review, reflect, return.
Yes, with an exec session for legal to start it off, and then, yeah, thank you. Wow, with that. Yeah, do we have, uh, well, one, I just, again, wanna thank everybody for your time. I know this was long, and I know you answered a ton of questions, and we really, we all really appreciate this. So, and value your time. Um, so with that, do we have cause for an exec session?
Uh, yes, Mayor Protem. There is on the agenda an executive session to consult, I'm sorry, an executive session discussion of a personnel matter, quarterly check-in for the municipal judge pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code, Section one dash eleven dash three C one, and Colorado Revised Statute twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, four F one.
With that, I'll take a vote, uh, or have each of you vote, um, if you wanna go into exec session?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Online?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, okay. With that, we've adjourned the study session. Thanks again, everybody.